All right, we're gonna call our regular workshop meeting to order on July fourteenth, twenty twenty five, at twelve oh one P M. Do we have anyone signed up for citizens' consciousness? I mean, we'll go on to the good things that are listed there and we'll recognize them tomorrow night. Information items. Our first is the tax report, analysis of the liquid taxes and services, which is written out late, but it's verified. Any of, we'll go, or no, we'll go. If anybody has a question, the refrigerator, she can ask. Then we have the monthly financial report, the June nursing report, the child nutrition summer twenty twenty five report, a safety report, maintenance report, and biology report, the personnel update with new hires for this month. And then we also have resignations effective this month. We have a list of personnel vacancies for instructional personnel and support personnel. Are there any questions at all on any of those?
Hey, on the, on the good things, all the recognitions, you know, Ms. Johnson. But what about Keegan Sullivan? I think she made top ten as well.
First year that, me. Uh, Keegan Sullivan, did Keegan make top ten as well?
Ms. Thomas, I know she was number one, but there were quite a few media posts about Ms. Sullivan being in the top ten.
There were only a couple that got sent over to us. Are you referring to the band recognition?
No, this is the Hosa.
Oh, for Hosa?
Yeah, this, yeah, Brent Thomas was, was number one in the nation, but on the social media post from Hosa, I'm sure Ms. Sullivan was also in the top ten.
Okay, Ms. Thomas was the only one that was sent to us.
Okay.
So the kid might have been out of pocket or whatnot, but double check.
Dr. Hawkins, on the, how are we coming on filling the vacancies that we have for?
Uh, there is about twelve teaching vacancies, all support staff.
I see these here, but are we having applications for them?
In some, we're, we're opening up rise candidates right now, but the, I think that, you know, when, when we talk about that they have funded schools on a historic perspective and that they infused this money into public education, I think it's apparent that that's not, that's not a solution in entirety. Any district of any size right now, that you picked up their website or you picked up their Facebook post, everybody's still got vacancies. We, we had ten, and then there's been two resignations after the thirty day prior to the first day of instruction penalty free deadline. And, and so we're, we're looking at implementing the rise candidates. I am not letting anyone out of contracts beyond thirty days that does not meet the state law of exemptions. And so we want to make sure that in this next school year that, from our H R department, that we do a very good job of communicating that. You know, we, we, we have a teacher that, that is a new hire, that, that signs a contract with us in May or April, and then, you know, twenty eight, twenty five days prior to the first day of instruction, they find a, another position in another district and want to resign. Well, ten years ago, you never had that problem, you know, and I understand thirty years ago we shook hands, but contracts have to mean something because it, it's not fair to the kids of code for you to take a job with us and then shop everybody else until you get another job and just say, I'm sorry, because if we hadn't took that person, we would have took the next person in life.
Somebody else.
And so I, I think that we always have to remember that, you know, educator code ethics, we should do no harm to kids, and that to me is an ethical problem that the state has created because of the way that they have went about putting the penalty free deadline on and changing those things in that regard and dealing with a very mercenary type mentality out there with some of the applicants. And, and so I think we, we've got to really educate and communicate and work with folks, but I'm still driven by, you don't want to be here, I don't want you here. I think it's a mistake to not be here.
But we can't do anything to harm our kids.
If there's a suitable replacement, I'll gladly let it out because if there's a suitable replacement, then we're not harming kids. But, but I'm, I'm digging in on some of those things. If we find suitable replacements in those two positions, we'll let them out. If we don't, then ultimately they will come to you in order to take action against the person who doesn't show up for their contract that we have to report to S B A. And so I have to report it to you, you have to formally approve that, and then I can send it to S B A. But I'm, I'm pretty much holding the line.
But we, we have a applicant pool that's suitable for these vacancies that we have now?
We, we have an applicant pool. I, I, I always like certified applicants. And so we're gonna have to rise some of these positions to, to fill them.
Okay.
Temporarily until they are certified or?
Until they're certified, yeah. I mean, you know, House Bill Two, you read House Bill Two, you know, the twenty six, twenty seven school year is, they're kind of, they're kind of making you do some things differently with non-certified staff, but, you know, and I, and I think that's asinine because, look, if there's a certified person out here, we'll hire them, but there is nobody. And I think that's what the legislature misses is that it's not that the students are not wanting to hire somebody, it's that they're extinct, you know, an endangered species at best. And so, but yes, we, that through our rise program, we definitely are working to try to get those folks certified.
Good.
Question? Yes, sir.
On, on new hires, real quick on new hires, I noticed in this update that we've got a new assistant high school band director by the name of Mr. Jacks.
Okay.
But I think social, what we put out was that he's actually going to a junior high.
Okay, let me.
And it's June, we had another, we hired an assistant junior high band director, but now we're putting out that it's actually going to be an assistant high school band director.
Yeah, so we're hiring in some of those spots, and then we've reshuffled a lot and reclassified some positions. Amanda has taken the, the lead there with fine arts, the fine arts director, the band director, and so Amanda, could you just give us a?
Yes, each, we haven't met with band directors yet, we've done the internal transfers, the band director meeting is upcoming. Each junior high have two and a half, so they'll have two full-time directors, a head and an assistant, and one that is half-day, half-day, so two and a half. And then the high school will have the head band director and then three assistants to help on, for the whole district.
And there was a reason for that because those junior high did not have a full schedule, and we're trying to get everybody with a full schedule.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you gotta commit resources to where the effort is, right? Where the majority of folks are, that, that's not the issue, you know, the challenges that the board last month, it was junior high band director, and board this month, it is high school band director, but we're putting out something different in social media.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with the social media posts, so.
Well, I mean, we're, we're reassigning them, I got it, we're reassigning them to where the effort is needs to be, right, resources.
Yes.
And Mr. Morales, you know, has a very good vision, and he's met with Ms. Canady and myself twice now to go ahead and make sure that we're, you know, accomplishing what he wants to do.
Full time, right? Full time, right? Going forward on it. But again, the board is saying one thing.
Ready?
Documentation's coming to the board, we're signing off on it, but yes, and then social media is saying something else. But if this is a deliberate decision to reassign resources against needs, okay.
One other question, Dr. Hawkins, what is a district-wide assistant principal?
Where we can fit them, like?
No, I, I'm not sure, what are you looking at?
I'm looking at the personnel vacancies, and it says assistant principal district wide.
They were hired in a pool.
Yeah.
So there's a pool that opens up.
To a specific, to a specific school?
It is, it is. What happens is teachers and, and administrators at some point get hired in a pool. Here's the reason why. Okay, forty-five days prior to the first day of instruction, most districts lock down and you can't get out of your contract, okay? So if somebody comes up three days before forty-five days, so they're forty-eight days prior to the first day of instruction, and they give you their resignation, if you don't have a pool posted, then you have to post that job for ten days.
Okay.
And so you've got to sit and wait ten days until that job is able to hire, which puts the kids of code back, because guess what? Somebody's hiring every day.
Right.
And so you have those pool postings towards people are hired in the pool, so that when there's a posting, then they can come out of that pool.
Okay, those positions.
Quick, quickly.
Yes, sir.
It's to, it's to try, everything that, that we need to do is to try to make our H R process very aggressive and very flexible and nimble in order to staff positions.
Right.
Because the people that were competing against are.
Correct. Any other questions then?
On the technology report, great report, tracking, right, a lot, a lot of work going on, but question, we authorized eighty hundred notebooks two months ago, whether they'll be here inside?
They'll be here on the twentieth, and they, they'll, they'll actually unbox them. They're, are the free provision, so literally all we gotta do is put them in the cart and put the charger, or put the charger on, they're ready to go.
Right, we're assigning them?
That's the beauty of the front books. Yeah, instead of thirty, forty-five minutes imaging them each, we literally provision them in the cloud, put them in, and they're ready to go.
Now, my assumption is the twentieth of July.
Yes.
Just gotta make sure.
Yes, sir.
And, and the nice thing is, with getting the front books, we did get them etched as
well, so they have our logo on them, and they also have the asset tag etched into them, so that, that helps control that inventory, but also keeps them from walking into a job.
Nice.
Great.
Deal.
All right, anything else? We'll go on to the administrative reports. Tomorrow night, we'll do the Tazby Summer Leadership Report from y'all. I think it's nice to do that in public where everyone that's there can hear about it. The next, we have the twenty-five, twenty-six school year impact day travel. We have two NAFIS conferences, one in the fall, Washington D C, September fourteenth through the sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, and then the one in the spring, which will be March fifteenth through seventeenth, twenty twenty-six. We have an Oasis Conference, the board president and superintendent go to in Tulsa, Oklahoma, November thirteenth and fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, and a TAFIS meeting, which Dr. Hawkins will be going to, location and dates to be announced. So those are the, the leadership, or the, excuse me, the impact day travel for, for this coming year. Next, we have twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five state assessment scores, and Mrs. Crowley will be giving us scores.
I wanted to make sure, we didn't want construction to go first, I saw that we're already set up, and I'm gonna unhook, I'm gonna unhook you guys, okay? Okay.
Well, first of all, I want to say I appreciate all that y'all do and all the support from the board regarding our district accountability and academic program, and so we have received preliminary scores from the state. These will become published, hopefully, in August for, on txschools.gov, and so they'll become kind of published in like a taper type format at that time, but we want to share them with the board at this time. We're gonna go over comparative scores with the region, the state, and the district, and so you'll be able to see how C C I S D is doing as a district. So in third grade, reading language arts, our comparative scores for the district, the district is at eighty-one percent, and then you'll see the region is the yellow line there, and the state is the black line, so we are well above the state and the region for third grade R L A, reading language arts, and that's the, been worked on really hard with our literacy program at our elementary schools as well, and so that's the first time our students take a star test, which is great. In fourth grade R L A, we are also above the, above the state and the region at eighty-three percent there, and so that's good, our kids are continuing to do well. And again, in fifth grade, reading language arts as well, eighty-two percent, very much outperforming our region and outperforming our state. So reading at the elementary schools is very solid, and so we're proud of that. We are working as those kids, we've done a lot of fix, and so you'll see as our kids move up to junior high, some of those students that have, have not had this, that redesigned elementary literacy program are hitting our junior highs now, and so you'll notice that they're right in line, but just a little bit below state there, and so we're working on that at sixth grade R L A. Same thing with seventh grade R L A, the district's at seventy-one percent, so right with the region, but a little below the state. And then eighth grade, we are neck and neck with the region and right at where the state is at eighty percent. So then we go to third grade math. We did implement a new curriculum at third grade math this year, and with any new curriculum, sometimes you see a little bit of a dip, so we're continuing to work on that this year. We are at sixty-eight percent for our district, and the state is at seventy, we're outperforming the region. And then same here, we see a jump up with fourth grade math, we're at seventy percent for the district at approaches or higher, the passing standard, and the state is at sixty-eight, and the region is at sixty-four percent.
Is that the same?
Go ahead.
Is that the same program, the, the third grade?
Different, different. So the state has rolled out high-quality instructional materials, they are, they are, it's a very different way of teaching math, as I'm sure you've seen and read, and so it's still good, it's just, it's like a more conceptual level of the way they're teaching things, and so as kids hit that, when it, when they first see it, it does cause them a little pause, and so fourth and fifth grade math are using the Sharon Wells curriculum that we have had for probably six, six years now, and so you'll, you'll notice that they are above the state and the region because it's very much star-focused, very in line with the star test. So the state did redesign that eureka and blue bonnet materials to help it be a little bit more teaks-based and star-focused there this year, so we'll see that coming out. And in fifth grade, same thing, the district is outperforming the state and the region by quite, quite a bit. So our students are moving into junior high math with a solid foundation. We do have an accelerated math program where all of our junior high students take Algebra One in eighth grade, and you'll see that, and because of that, our sixth and seventh grade math students are compressed, those teaks are compressed there, so they're getting quite a bit. So they are coming in at sixty-nine percent, just below the state, but at the region in sixth grade math, and then just below the region at sixty-five percent, a little bit below the state at sixty-eight percent pre-algebra, but then you'll notice we jump right back up here in Algebra One to seventy-eight percent, and they're taking this test a year early. So all of our eighth graders take Algebra One, and when you're comparing to the region and the state, those are their ninth graders, and these are our eighth graders. So you can see, you can see it kind of comes out in the wash for those E O Cs, but our seventh and eighth grade math scores are really coming along, so we want that to be right up at eighty percent, that's, that's our current goal, is to push to eighty, and so I have no doubt that we'll get there. We are there at junior high, but then our retesters at the high school kind of affect that number, so when you see it broken out, it looks a little bit different. Fifth grade science has been an area that we've been working on, we were pretty far below this last year, and we've come up and we are above the region now, and right neck and neck with the state there at sixty-two percent. And then eighth grade science, you'll see we jump up to seventy-four percent above the region and the state, so biology as well, we are at ninety-three percent above the state and the region at ninety-one, and eighth grade social studies is very challenging, very, very literacy-based, very dense test at eighth grade, and so we're at fifty-nine percent above the region and the state as well there. And then our U S history scores are at ninety-six percent, still trending above the region and the state. English One is seventy-two percent, so our high school students in those E O Cs for English One at seventy-two, and then English Two at seventy-four percent for the district, so above the region and the state there. And then we just summarized some quick standout things here. We outperformed the region in thirteen assessments, and then we were at the region in three at the exact same standard there, and then we outperformed the regional assessment data in fourth and fifth grade math by six to eight percent, depending, so very proud of that. And then we outperformed the state overall on twelve assessments, outperformed significantly in third, fourth, and fifth grade reading, which we're very proud of, we want our students to have that foundational skill moving forward, and outperformed the state in English One by six percent. And then I always want to brag on our C C M R, college career and military readiness or preparedness, we were at ninety-six percent C C M R, and so you can see that broken down by how our students are earning that C C M R credential, and so two-point-six percent are military-ready, meaning they've turned in a D D four, and they have enlisted or said that they're going into the military, and then we have forty-three-point-five percent who are career-ready, meaning they've passed an industry-based certification, and then fifty-three-point-nine percent are college-ready, which means that they have passed T S I or S A T qualification scores or college prep. So we have a very good C C M R program, and this is kind of, I showed you how they're starting in third grade, and this is how they're finishing in twelfth grade, and so we're very proud of our students in Copper's Cove and the education that they're getting, and we feel that they are very well-prepared for their next steps in the future. Any questions?
So those, those state assessments or scores, were those based off when they took it in the spring or April?
Twenty-four, twenty-five.
Twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yes, twenty-four, twenty-five, so they took it in April and May, depending. This also includes the December test.
That's right.
And it also includes our summer E O Cs. Uh, no, wait.
That are making up?
Yeah, what we've gotten back, it includes everything we've gotten back.
Okay.
Yeah, so summer E O Cs will actually figure into next year's accountability, but we can have those results in.
So, you know, I was concerned about the math scores.
Yes.
Fourth and fifth went up, so with the, with a different program.
It is a different curriculum, yes.
So will fourth and fifth be the curriculum of third grade?
Not yet. We're getting, we want, before we, before we move into any other curricular changes, we want to get those students a very firm foundation in that different, it's a little bit different conceptually thinking. So now they've had it K two and third as well, we're gonna hold steady at third and let them get that good firm foundation before we roll that curriculum up to fourth grade. We want our teachers to be fully prepared and confident and.
So you're not rolling it up this quick?
No, I am, not yet.
Okay.
We kind of made an internal decision.
I'm just kind of questioning why changing it if we're doing better.
Well, I'll tell you, the state is really pushing for all of the districts to use the high-quality instructional materials that the state has adopted, and that is one of them. And so we had been doing it at K two, this was our first year to pilot at third, but we really want to give everybody another year to get just very comfortable with it before we move forward, and as a district, we want to have.
See if it's the right thing.
Correct, correct, yes, ma'am.
Because do you have to do what the state tells?
You don't have to, but they are time-funding to it. So if you want your instructional materials funding, you have to use their curriculum. And so they are, they are tying the funding to that, and so the instructional materials allotment, I'm sure you're familiar with that, the funding bucket, so they're saying if you use theirs, then they'll pay for it in the I M A funds. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just, just to, you know, interested.
It is, it's, it is good stuff, I will say that. I know it, it seems like there's a little dip, but it is really good curriculum, it's just a very, it's a very different way of teaching some of the same things, and our teachers have a lot of confidence in it, they really liked it, trialing it this year, but we want to let our kids get really firm in that, it's a different kind of vocabulary, a different kind of structure, so.
Amanda, isn't it, that's also tied to the fact that the Star Chapter test in math is more of a reading test, and they've changed how they conceptually present problems too.
They have.
And that's focused on how these, these kids learn what the concepts are and how to approach taking that test, since it's totally different than what it used to be.
You're right, you're, you're exactly right, it's very, it's very literacy-rich, the problems are all word problems, there is no, no more just.
Two plus two.
Yeah, there is no more basic math, all of it is conceptually based and application, as it should be, because you want kids to not just know how to add and subtract, you want them to be able to apply it in the real world. And so they're moving that direction, but that is, that's a lift, especially for eight-year-olds in third grade, you know, so we want to, we want to take our time and do it right. Yes.
Obviously, we continue to maintain or increase the levels across the board. What was the percentage difference between the fifth grade of science last year and this year? That was.
Oh, I, can I get, let me get back to you, because I don't have that number committed to memory, but I, I have it, I can pull it up. It is, we, we came up a lot, and this was our second year.
Be what there might be.
Say it again?
I thought it was twelve percent.
It's a, it's a good jump.
Yeah, it's, it's significant, right?
Yes, and that test is tough.
Well, so far.
Mm-hmm, that's a tough test. But we, that's our second year with a new curriculum at that grade level, we put a lot of time and effort and training and P D into that, and it's really good, it's phenomenon-based, so they're doing all labs and hands-on, and it's, it's really wonderful, so it's exactly what you would want to see in a science classroom, yes. So it's coming along.
So I'd just say, I, I would say this, I know that, that some of you reached out to me, that at least one community member had called you and was wondering why our scores weren't as robust as what they would have thought they would be. Our scores are actually very good.
Yeah.
And, you know, the second thing I would say about that is I have absolutely no confidence in our current state testing system. The governor has added that to the list for the special session, and kudos to him. I, I hope that it changes, that changes for the better. I mean, this is the double, we know, but at the same time, I would say this, our kids deserve better, but regardless of what happens, we've got to prepare our kids, if we agree with the test or disagree with it, we've got to prepare our kids for success so that they can feel like that they are successful and continue to have dreams, if they can reach. But the other thing that I would say is, is this, I'm very proud of code not being satisfied, you know, Mr. Gore talks about the science scores, and I think those eighth grade algebra scores. And I think those eighth grade algebra scores are just as impressive because our eighth graders are being compared to other districts' ninth graders. And that's something that, that community member didn't understand. And it wasn't, it wasn't, it was lost in the, uh, in the, uh, I guess, uh, in the news media. They said that you bury the lead.
Yeah.
And, uh, I think that's a very good example of that. Um, but, but my point in that is this, you also see the largest district in state of Texas is going away from that. They want sixth, seventh, and eighth grade math taught. And so those scores are higher. So it inflates the scores and makes that district look like it's, it's doing more. But my point is, is that it's good to be part of a district that's actually doing the right thing for kids. Because those kids taking algebra in the eighth grade, this, the, the research does lie. Those kids are more successful post-secondary when they do that. And so it, it may, uh, affect our scores in some shape, form, or fashion. You can see there that we, we're seventy-eight, the region's seventy-seven, the state's at seventy-six. So yeah, if we game the system and didn't do that, we might be eighty-two or eighty-five. Who knows?
Well, I.
But we're doing the right thing for kids.
I want to add, I just went and looked it up real quick. Our, uh, our junior highs were eighty and eighty-six percent for, uh, so our junior highs, that seventy-eight is our retesters. Because about, let's say about twenty to, eh, fourteen percent of those kids retake it in high school. And so that's accounting for the retesters. But, um, the first time they take it in junior high, we're, we're well above eighty to eighty-six percent at our junior highs for passing. So they're, they're not suffering. Uh, in fact, it's giving them the opportunity to get to pre-calculus and calculus in high school, which if they at all want to have a STEM career or go into college, that's, that's vital, as you know.
So if they don't pass it in junior high, their elective credit or one or two could be threatened in high school?
They just, they retake, uh, the exam in high school. Though if they pass the course, they'll go into geometry. If they did not pass the course, then they'll retake algebra one and they're not even behind.
Okay.
So they get another shot at it.
Okay.
The, the third thing that I would add, uh, to that not being satisfied is, you know, we've reclassified positions that I was talking about and I sent a report to the board. You know, we, we now have two chiefs of instruction and I think that is crucial. We split elementary, you know, we've got a new elementary, Ms. Tarler, I'll be the elementary. And then, uh, Ms. Banning will be the, uh, secondary. And I think that's, uh, crucial that, that she can devote a lot of time into the state phenomenon of our junior highs across the state, being the hardest group to reach a high level of accountability as far as the rating system goes. And so we're trying to put resources to where our needs are that can make a difference.
Yes, agreed. I have no doubt we'll continue to do well, so thank y'all.
Thank you. All right, next is the tax attorney report. This is from Purdue, Brandon, Fielder, Collins, and Mark.
Hello, Pete.
Yes, uh, trustees, I've asked them, and I think it's important, we've got two new trustees. And I think it's always important for everyone to understand kind of what tax attorneys do, what their systems and processes and y'all see reports on the agenda. And so I thought it would be beneficial as late as come and y'all just put a, a face to the, the data and everything and so that everybody has a real good understanding of that process, especially when you see something that goes to sheriff's level. Anyway, thank y'all for being here.
Thank you for having us, we appreciate it. And, um, I'll introduce myself, I'm Sergio Garcia, I'm one of the attorneys with Purdue, Brandon. Um, we are fortunate enough to represent Copper's Cove I S D in your, the delinquent tax collections. Um, we have a strong collections program and Tim Adams is going to go into, into that. And a lot of that is rooted in, in our approach to, uh, collections. Um, we emphasize, uh, communications with your taxpayers. We send out letters, uh, to everyone who's delinquent. We also have a call center that reaches out to your taxpayers. And this is a, uh, the call center is, is, uh, our call center. They're, they're hired by us, they're trained by us, they're supervised by us. And they reach out and, uh, uh, and extended a live phone call to, eh, taxpayers who are, who are delinquent and give them a chance to pay, uh, before we file a lawsuit. Um, so that we never file a lawsuit without communicating with your taxpayers first. They at least, at a minimum, they're going to get a, a letter and a phone call from our office. Um, ultimately, we have the, the, uh, if those efforts don't, don't, uh, result in payment, we can go as far as selling the property, but, but, um, at the tax sale. But again, we, we pride ourselves in communicating with the taxpayers first and giving them an opportunity to pay, uh, before we, we, uh, embark to litigation and for closure. And I'll tell you what I didn't know about.
All right. Thank you, Sergio. My name is Adam Docree with Purdue. I'm in the Austin office with Sergio. And like you said, we really do appreciate y'all giving us the opportunity to be here and update you on our efforts. Um, is this?
Okay. While I'm kicking that up, let me just say that this is the fourth county that I've been superintendent in and delinquent taxes really aren't a problem here like they are at some of the counties that I've served with. Uh, and so we've got some systems and processes that work and taxpayers who do their due diligence to make payments.
That's correct. You're, from what we've seen and comparable to other districts, your taxpayers have a higher percentage of payment, uh, before it gets to us. And then our, we are very happy with our numbers, uh, since it gets turned over to us and we'll, we'll go over that. But, uh, I'll, I'll be brief. I know y'all have the full agenda, so I'll try to keep it, uh, as brief as I can. Uh, I'm just going to go over the twenty-twenty-four tax year calendar so you kind of have an idea of our timeline and, and our process and when it gets to us. And then I'll go over the, uh, tax year levy and turnover. So what just got turned over to us on July one. And then, uh, briefly just go over the, the past month, uh, June collections, uh, for full years. And then, uh, the last two will be two charts that show the turnover collections for the last five years. So just the, the part that gets turned over to us and then that compared to the full levy. So you can see how, how high, that's the percentages of collections really are, um, as a whole. So on page three, I believe you'll have handouts, but if not, I'll, I'll go over it and I'll pull it up on the screen. Uh, but on page three, um, section A there, we've got the twenty-twenty-four tax year calendar. So each year, uh, on January one, that's when the properties are assessed by the appraisal district. So the ownership and value of the property, it's like a screenshot on that day of, uh, that's, that's what they're going to be basing the value and the ownership on, unless they're given, eh, given that info throughout the year of changes in ownership. That's, that's going to be what they're going on. Um, fast forward to October of twenty-twenty-four, that's when the, the bills get mailed out. Uh, so the tax offices will send out mail, send out the bills and that's when they'll be getting a lot of calls and upset taxpayers that their, their taxes are higher than they were the previous year. Um, and so fast forward to February, they don't go delinquent until February first of twenty-five. So the twenty-twenty-four taxes, now they're going to wait till February first of twenty-five. That's when penalties and interest will start to accrue. So on February one, they've got a six percent penalty and one percent interest that will be, uh, that'll be assessed on that day. And then it goes up one percent each month until July, I believe maxes out at eighteen percent. And that's when our collection penalty is tacked on. So, um, I skipped ahead a little bit, but May, that's when a notice of delinquent collection penalty is mailed. And so that's if the entity's hire an attorney like our firm to do collections, they send out that notice in May saying, hey, if July one comes around and these taxes aren't paid yet, it's going to be an extra fifteen percent penalty. And we like to say that we're the good attorneys, our, our fees are free to the I S D. That's how we get paid. That fifteen percent penalty that's tacked on, on July one, is how we get our attorney's fee. So it's no charge to the, to the I S D, it's just on the delinquent taxpayer. And when we collect that, that balance or eventually have to sell the property, that's when we, we will, uh, recover our costs. So the twenty-twenty-four, does anyone have a question on the, the calendar, kind of the top line? Yeah, okay. The, uh, section B, the twenty-twenty-four levy and turnover. So this, the little sliver there, that's just one point five six percent of your full turnover, that's what got turned over to us on July one, just this past week, last week. Um, we, we typically see this, you know, it, it differs between the districts, but three to four percent is not unusual. So the one point five percent is very good. That's already a good sign that your, your taxpayers are getting their taxes paid. Uh, so we're just working with that one percent there, um, and that's what's turned over to us. We don't, we're not immediately filing lawsuits. Like Sergio said, our, our firm isn't just about filing lawsuits and ambushing heirs of properties and, and, and adding all these core costs into the mix as well. Uh, we're trying to collect in the most efficient way. And the taxpayers here in this district have, have been really consistent about entering payment agreements and making monthly payments. So we're, we're happy that they're, uh, responding to that and the numbers have, have shown to be positive with that, that process. And certain instances, we have to file lawsuits. A lot of times there'll be deceased, uh, property owners that have passed and they have heirs that might be all over the country, you know? And they don't know.
That's what I was going to ask, was like, uh, are these primary resident homes? Are these inheritance?
Rarely are we selling, uh, home sets, you know? It's usually, uh, acreage that someone inherited and they're in different, you know, different county or different state even. And then we're usually working with them on payment agreements as they're trying to keep it in their family. Or if they're planning on selling it to pay the taxes, there's, there's different options that they've got. Uh, but we definitely work with them to get them paid. Cause it's, if they're wanting to get, if they're wanting to get it paid and there's a process that we can work with them on getting it paid, that'll be a quicker, that'll be a more efficient way of like, and then going through the whole legal system and it, it takes time to, to get it to a sheriff's sale. Okay, so on to section C, this is just kind of a brief overview of this past month's collection. So this is for all years, not just twenty-twenty-three and prior. Uh, this is all years. Um, you can see the base tax collections were a little over fourteen thousand, uh, but the total collections were eighteen thousand. So that penalty and interest really does add up. Um, it's one percent each month that, that interest keeps going. Um, and so you can see there's a decent chunk of penalty and interest. It's, it's not always the worst thing in the world to, to collect, maybe a month or two of delinquents. So then you get that penalty and interest added to the mix. Um, just any questions so far? All right, we'll move on to section D. Uh, this page is a really good overview of the, the collections for the past five years. Um, at first, it's a little bit confusing that, I mean, you see the chart up top that pretty much just translates down to the, uh, the bar graph below it. Um, that data's plugged into that bar, bar graph. The blue, the blue bar for each, each year, that's the collection percentage after twelve months of collections. So the twenty-twenty-three tax year got turned over to us on July one of twenty-twenty-four. So July one of twenty-twenty-five, just this past couple of weeks, that would have been our twelve-month mark. And so that, that's what you see on that twenty-twenty-three tax year, that bar graph. That's why they're the exact same, cause as of six thirty twenty-five and the twelve months are going to be the, the same number there. Does that, does that make sense on, on that, that chart? Okay. And as you can see, you know, we're, we're typically in the mid-seventies, uh, set mid-seventy percent after that first year. And then, you know, those tougher properties that are requiring a little more research and, and, um, airship, uh, ownership research, those are going to take a little bit longer and those we're just going to keep whittling away at that, that delinquent balance. So, and you can see as the years get older, that, that yellow bar is going to be higher. It's going to continue to go up. We're going to continue making efforts on those older years. And I would like to point out, this is just base tax only. So those penalty and interest aren't included in the collection numbers here. This is just the base tax. So, uh, those collection numbers are even a little bit higher if we've got the, the penalty and interest included. And then the last chart, uh, section D, that's the full levy. So that entire, entire pie from the, the first graph, the first chart, um, you can see there, once again, base tax only here. Um, twenty-nineteen, you're, you're looking at ninety-nine point eight-eight percent collected on the levy. So very high percentage. And then, uh, going all the way over to twenty-twenty-three, we're at ninety-nine point five-eight percent, um, collected. So, uh, as, as a whole, the levy looks really good, really high percentage of collection and, and that is base tax only. So even better if we're going to include that penalty and interest in the calculations. Um, and do, does anyone have any questions about the charts here? Our, our process?
Please, please.
Well, thank you very much for letting us present our selection efforts and we hope to be impressed. And please let us know if you got our, our contact information on the first page there. Uh, down, so I'll take the reach outs if you got any questions about any properties that really will thank, or if we're here for it.
Thank y'all so much. Thank.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do you want?
Now, I didn't forget being, uh, great.
Fun for y'all.
I just, y'all would probably.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
Nice to meet you. And our last report is, uh, the construction vetted presentation by Gallagher Construction.
So the next person is Mr. Franks and, and in this, uh, affects consent agenda item N and O. Um, when, when districts by law, uh, enter into a construction project, uh, you have to designate the construction method. And there are various methods like, uh, general contractor, design bill, construction manager at risk, instruction manager agent. And so knowing that we have some potential construction projects coming up, uh, I've asked Mr. Franks, and he just kind of talked to you about what the construction manager agent does. It's what I feel like is the most appropriate in our projects, uh, as we look at things. Uh, when you start doing campus-wide projects and things like that, uh, it kind of leaves the design bill method out. Uh, this method, from my estimation, allows you as a district to be able to, uh, maintain some say in who subcontractors are. And I also think that this is the most fiscally responsible, uh, path to go down here as well, so.
All right, well, uh, piggybacking off what Adam said, I know you have a loaded agenda, so I'll be mindful of your time. Uh, my name is Bowie Franks, I'm with Gallagher Construction. I live just down the road in Gatesville. Um, so I'll, I'll get started here, talk about construction manager agent, talk a little bit about us as a company. Um, and then I'll show you a, a, it's, an example of one of our bid tabs as well as a total sheet. And I'll touch on those once we get there. So a little bit about, about, uh, Gallagher Construction. So we are an owner's representative, uh, construction services firm founded in nineteen sixty-eight. Uh, some of our services include construction management, uh, program management, bond planning, facility planning. Uh, and we only work with school districts and municipalities within the state of Texas. So all of those public projects. Here's a map. Um, our company has over a hundred and ninety employees and we've worked with over a hundred and thirty, uh, school districts and municipalities within the state of Texas. Uh, we have four offices. We have a Richardson office, which is where the home base was, a Fort Worth office, a Waco office, and a Houston office. And then all of those dark green spots right there are counties that we, that we've done work in. So here's just a list of some of our central Texas clients, um, close to y'all. Uh, we're in Hamilton, uh, I've got a board meeting tonight, event. Uh, McGregor just down the road, we're, we're turning dirt out there for their May twenty-four, uh, bond projects. Uh, but here's, here's a list of central Texas clients here that we've worked with in the area. Here are some picture examples. This is a rendering, uh, because McGregor hasn't completed yet, obviously. Uh, so they're doing a competition gym and a junior high school out there. This project is pretty cool. The front entrance of this, of this facility, there's about thirty thousand square feet of an old Dell call center. Um, so we're renovating that, adding sixty thousand square feet off the back of it and converting it into their new junior high school out there. Uh, so it's cool being able to utilize things like that. The O C center over in Forney, we've worked with Forney for over twenty years. Um, I don't know if y'all are familiar with this project, but the entire bottom floor of this facility is open to the public. And it's really, uh, super innovative. Uh, they bring the community, uh, and, and the school together. And the students are actually able to get their C T E credits and then actually have a job on the bottom floor of that building. Um, so there's auto mechanics, you can roll and get your oil changed by high school students and they're getting paid. And there's actual local businesses in the bottom. They've got boutiques, childcare, restaurants, uh, coffee shops, you name it. So, um, this is a pretty cool project that I'd like to show off and it's, it's super neat. Uh, we did a.
Hold on just a second, let me just say something to the board. If, if, if you've never heard of OC before, I would encourage you to just Google Forney ISD OC. And there is some news, uh, clips on there. There are some, uh, just, uh, interviews that are on there from the district. Uh, that's like a one point two billion dollar bond. They have two high schools in Forney and those kids go in there and it is a fabulous concept and a fabulous idea. Uh, one, one of the first notes that I saw, so who built the project, it's a Gallagher Construction. Uh, but it is a really neat concept, um, that doesn't work everywhere or for everybody. It's just something that's really neat to see. Yeah, but that thing is, it is monstrous. It, the whole bottom floor down there is, is a model. And, and that's, so that's what it is, is a model. And those, and those businesses, you know, it might be a coffee shop, it may be a nursery. I mean, uh, uh, to, to where they're selling floral. Uh, it may be, uh, there's, there's one that's kind of like maybe a panic room or something. Anyway, those businesses in town and entrepreneurs come in there and they rent spaces. And then those kids run those things. And then upstairs is the entire, uh, CTE, uh, quasi-high school up there to where those kids are learning skills, crafts and trades. And then those bottom, the bottom section really is what's allowed, it's their la, uh, real hands-on labs. And then of course they've got the performance part of that, which is basketball arena or they can put, uh, concerts on and things like that as well.
It's a, it's a pretty neat deal and I, I just like to turn it off, obviously, like you said, it doesn't work everywhere, but it, it's, it's just an example of how, you know, education's changing, uh, from your standard classrooms kind of deal.
Does, does the district own the OC center or is it split ownership?
No, it's the, it's the Forney ISD.
Okay.
So that was, that was their bond, it was one of their bonds. They, they've done a pretty fast growth district and so they, you know, used to just the Jackrabbits of Forney. But now they have like a Forney West High School, so they got two high schools on them and they bus those kids in there, uh, to that center, uh, for both high schools.
Wow.
Uh, we also, uh, built Ponders High School, uh, they're a fast growth district as well. Up there in DFW as well as Van Alstine High School up there in North Texas, that would be the greatest count. Um, so there's just some visuals of some, some districts we've worked with. Our current work, we are managing over three point eight billion dollars worth of construction projects as a construction manager, agent or a program manager. Um, we're deployed and positioned various parts of the state, all over the state. And we hire as locally as possible to give those opportunities to those local trades. Um, and I'll touch a little bit more on that once we get to the bid tab and the total sheet and, and talk about that a little bit. So when we're talking about construction manager agent, here is how it's structured. Um, as, as Dr. Hawkins says, there's, there's different delivery methods and typically what you see, um, is the, is the owner, the, the, the district, the architect and then a general contractor, construction manager at risk under that. Um, what typically happens there is, is the architect really gets in there and, and, and spears the ship on what's happening. Um, with construction manager agent, it actually puts us on the same level as architect. Uh, and what you'll see by doing that is it creates a good team approach between the owner, the architect and the CMA. Um, and it creates a natural checks and balances system. Uh, because the reality of it is architects are, are very artistically minded. Um, and we are very efficient and cost savings minded. So a, a perfect building for us would be a giant rectangle with a shoebox with no windows or anything like that. So having the architect there, uh, to have that artistic mind, uh, it, it creates a good checks and balances system. Uh, because you know, not every, every single facility needs to win a, uh, world-class, uh, you know, award.
State of the art.
Yes, right. What's good for copper's coat might not be what's good for Frisco ISD. Um, so we're able to, to keep them in that box so, so things aren't overdesigned or, uh, you know, maybe something's not practical for, for copper's coats. Um, so there's a checks and balances system there. We're typically brought on early in the process, uh, just so we can help set timelines and budgets, things like that, make sure they're held to those. Throughout the design process, we actually sit in the room with the, the owner and architect. So we're there throughout the entire process, making sure that the timeline's staying on track and we're staying within budget with what's being drawn. Uh, we have checkpoints throughout the entire process, uh, to make sure that these things are staying in line. And then once drawings are finished, we bid everything out publicly and I'll talk, I'll touch on that on our bid tabs. Uh, once those bids come in and it's approved by the board, uh, we've got the job site superintendent, uh, fencing. It, every, we look like a general contractor from anybody that's passing the sheet. So then we manage those trades all the way through. Um, so here's how it's structured. I'll talk about a few points with construction manager agent. We've actually seen that it promotes a faster delivery schedule since we're able to sit in there with architects and the owners and make sure that those timelines are getting pressed along as they should. An example of that is over in McGregor. Um, we actually finished drawings two months earlier than, than originally scheduled, uh, which allowed us, uh, to free up some, some budget space and escalation costs and get that pumped out quicker. It promotes that true team approach between that architect, contractor and the owner, make sure everything's transparent. We have the design base builder assistance, as I kind of touched on. We are with the district all the way through, sitting on your side of the table throughout the entire design phase, making sure, um, that everything's practical and staying within budget. Uh, so our, our fee, we work on a fixed fee. Um, so we are a professional service. So Texas Government Code twenty-two fifty-four states that since we are a professional service, we must be selected on our qualifications rather than our fee. Um, so legally, I'm not able to sit here and tell you what our fixed fee looks like. But what I can say is that it, it is on a scale. Um, because if it's a five million dollar project or a five hundred million dollar project, we still have to have job site superintendents, job trailers, utilities, things like that. So that's where the, the scale fits into place. From there, it is a percentage based on the cost of the project. But once the, the district decides on a fee, um, that fee remains flat throughout the entire process. Where that kind of comes into play, I like to use tile as an example. So you have tile one, it is imported from Italy, it is top of the line, it's the prettiest thing you've ever seen. Um, and you have tile two, it's efficient, it's practical, it looks good. Um, but it's not from Italy and it's not a shiny, you know? Um, where that comes into play, if you're working on a percentage base fee, um, in the back of your mind, you, you know, if the, the cost of the project is higher, you're gonna get more profit out of it. Um, so since we work on a fixed fee and we're fiduciary to the district, we can step back and that is not a factor. Um, so we're not trying to drive up the cost. So we can sit back and say, maybe tile two is the, the best option for the district, uh, based on the money. If the district still wants tile, tile one, it's what the district wants. Uh, but that's where that fixed fee comes into play. We, we don't benefit from, from trying to drive up the percentage of the project. Um, our bid processes are the most transparent bid processes. I'll touch on that once we get to the bid tab. And then again, that checks and balances between the architect, engineer and contractor, um, just the way it's structured. One more thing on the fixed fee aspect of it, um, we don't charge for change orders. And typically since we're brought on earlier in the project, that actually greatly limits the amount of change orders that there are since we're there from the very beginning, sitting with the district and architects throughout the entire project instead of getting brought on later. Um, obviously change orders are gonna happen, it's construction, um, but we do not charge a management fee for change orders. So when you're dealing with a general contractor or a, a CMAR, uh, you hear the term guaranteed maximum price, which is your GMP. Um, so our version of that is just a bond amount or the set budget amount from the beginning. We can't go over that unless the board intends to from the beginning, typically that's not the case. So the total cost is approved by the board before contracts are awarded. And I'll, I'll dive into that more and once we get to the bid tabs and the total sheets. The district controls a hundred percent of the contingency. So any, any money left over is the district to use for other projects or savings to the taxpayers. Um, and each one of our trades is required to be bonded and insured, uh, to make sure they are capable of doing that work. And if something happens, um, what if they fail to perform, what if they go under halfway through the project? Um, we actually have dedicated staff that, that goes after these, these contractors to make sure that we get their bonding and insurance money, to make sure that the district's not at risk, uh, for falling behind in project and left, um, say a, a, a concrete company goes over, goes under. Uh, they, they don't go under, uh, uh, overnight. So we're able to track that, make sure that everything's in line, uh, to where we're able to get the next guy in there and make sure that project gets done within the budget. Uh, it's within our contract, our fiduciary responsibility to make sure that we go after those, those companies there. So now I'll talk about our, uh, our bid tabs and our total sheets. So it is very small, uh, it's not really important that we see exactly what's on here, it's just the concept itself. So what we'll do is, is we'll put together bid packages in the most efficient way possible and we will blast public bid out to everybody that we can. Um, that touches on the, the local contractors, typically you get pretty good pricing once you use local contractors. Uh, but once we get in all these bids as considered competitive sealed proposals, we will open them in front of the district, um, and go through each one and vet all of them. Uh, so this is where the district has flexibility to, to use who they want and they're able to see every single, uh, that goes in and out of the project. So the district's able to see all of this information here, uh, as opposed to a guaranteed maximum price where they'll tell you, okay, I'll do this project for fifty million dollars, but you don't know what all goes into that. Um, so here's where the district has the flexibility, uh, to use who they want. Maybe the lowest bidder, you've had a bad experience with them, uh, you know they don't do quality work. The district's actually able to go in and say, we wanna use bidder number two, that's slightly more expensive, but, you know, maybe they're a really influential in the community, they, they support the school district, things like that. The district's actually the ones that gets to award those projects. We will give recommendations, um, cause obviously there's a lot that goes into construction projects. Um, but ultimately it's the district's decision on, on who works on these, on these jobs. Um, one way that we utilize, uh, efficiencies and we're able to, to pack more into a budget is, uh, through alternate bidding. So on the left side there in the middle, you see most of the numbers there, that's part of the base bid. Um, but through the design process, we're kind of putting together a wish list on, you know, we don't have this as a base bid, but we wanna see if we can get this out of it. So a lot of times I'll use a, a parking lot for an example with concrete. Uh, it's kind of, I know you're bidding on the base project, but how much would you do this for while you're here? And that way we're able to get great pricing through economy to scale since they already have their, their crew there. Um, so when the total sheet comes in, which I'll touch on next, we're able to go in and plug in extra project at the end since you'll, you guys are able to see every single dollar that goes in and out. Um, so that's, that's the gist of our, our bid tabs and, and how we bid things out. Uh, now I'll get into the total sheet, which is essentially the list of everybody that's awarded the projects. So here's an example of one of our total sheets. Um, again, it's a lot of small letters, so I apologize, but, um, again, this is essentially everybody that's awarded the project. This will be presented to the board before contracts are awarded. So it, it compiles everything, it spits it out at the end. Their budget was fifteen million dollars for this project, it came in at twelve point seven million. Um, so there are two point eight million dollars under budget. So this is where those alternate biddings come in. So we're able to go back and look at that wish list of the numbers that we were, that we've acquired through the bid, uh, the bid process. And, uh, all of these alternates were awarded. So they're able to pack more project in there than they were originally anticipating. Uh, and then after those alternates were, were awarded, there was still one point seven million dollars under budget. So that money stays with the district. Um, and again, you see every single dollar that goes in and out. So you can use that for other projects within the same scope of the bond language. Uh, or you can save the taxpayers money and not have to raise taxes as much as you were anticipating. It's not that big of a difference, but it, that, that is an option. So I know that's a lot of information and those fa, those past few slides are pretty difficult to see, but, uh, are there any questions?
Just a comment from the district standpoint, I think that the sooner that we get the construction agent with the architect, the better plans that we have for whatever, for whatever project that we bring forward. Uh, the longer we wait, the longer delays things and the, and the lesser product of plans that we have.
So whether it's something like Jeff talked about last time, like.
If you just went to Fairview and.
Fairview Miss Jewel or if it's a complete launch project, I mean, they're, they're definitely different scopes.
Exactly.
But having a construction manager agent, I know that we've done that over and over through the years. Have a CMA that has worked with the architect and it's always been, it seems like to me the smart thing to do. But, and it's been worthwhile to have someone like that, that you could talk to. Like we said, the, the architect's got those ideas up here. The, uh, construction person has maybe a little bit more, uh. Yeah, down-to-earth ideas for whatever, however you wanna say it, but, uh, they work. It seems like you need both, both, not just one or the other.
And we know we're doing something. And so getting them on board as quick as possible like that just suggests the path rather than wait, waiting to see and then being reactive. Any questions?
Adam Schrings. Yes, sir. My question is, I, I, I love, I love to, a couple of examples. And you're frank, have you worked for the district before?
Me personally?
Well, no, but you're a construction, Gallagher. Have you all worked with us before?
Oh, no, sir. No, sir, we have not worked for the district. No, sir.
Hey, I got one. So when you say it feels like leftover money, and as long as it's mimicking or kind of following the language of the bond, that's when it's whatever's left over, the right time to utilize it wisely?
If you have a bond, then, then, and you get to the, to that project and it's under budget, you can use that money for anything within the scope of that bond that was passed. Uh, if, if, if monies is coming out of a fund balance, then those monies just don't ever get encumbered out of fund balance. Okay. So, uh, and, and as Mr. Frank said, if you do have a bond and you don't use those monies in the scope of your bond for a, additional items, then you can, if the tax rate was gonna be thirty cents and you come in under budget, then it may be twenty-six cents.
Thank you.
All right, well, I appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think I'll pull them coming out.
I like it because you're right up the road from us.
Absolutely.
That's right.
We know where his lips, right, sir?
We sure do.
Gotta pay for.
All right, we have a lengthy consent agenda, so y'all just, um, don't take a nap, but, but, uh, if you'll listen to it while I, while I read them and then, uh, we'll go step by step and if you have questions on anything, please, uh, you know, we'll go, we'll, we'll let Dr. Hawkins answer your questions. The consent agenda, this is not consistent. The consent agenda, this is not consistent. First, to consider and discuss previous Board of Trustees meeting minutes. First of all, the special meeting, May sixth, twenty twenty five. A special meeting, May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. A workshop meeting, May ninth, twenty twenty five. Our regular meeting, June tenth, twenty twenty five. And a special call meeting that was June eighteenth, twenty twenty five. Then we also will consider and discuss the financial statement and payments of bills. And the check register is there. Then we'll consider and discuss the budget amendment request for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five fiscal year fund, one ninety nine operating budget. We'll consider and discuss to approve, to adopt a resolution for the commitment of fund balance for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five fiscal year. Consider and discuss to approve amendments to policy F N G local, C H local, and D N A local. Then we'll consider and discuss to approve Tasby localized policy manual update one twenty five. Consider and discuss to approve the agreements with Central Texas College for the twenty twenty five through twenty twenty seven school year. Consider and discuss to approve the advanced courses for exemption from the University Interscholastic League, the U I L no pass, no play provision for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year. Consider and discuss the C C I S D credit line exam, also known as C B I for acceleration E A. List of tests for both acceleration and/or credit recovery purposes. Then we'll consider and discuss the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six remote homebound waiver. Consider and discuss the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six staff development minutes waiver request. Then consider and discuss to approve purchases over twenty five thousand dollars. First, the renewal of E dynamic learning digital curriculum for C C H S career and technical education. This is B B number six nine two dash two three software for twenty five thousand, five hundred dollars. And this is from budgeted funds. Also, consider and discuss to approve roofing repairs and damage to Williams Ledger Elementary School. We'll consider and discuss to approve construction manager agent as the delivery method for potential projects. And consider and discuss to approve Gallagher Construction Company to serve as a construction manager agent for potential construction projects. Then we'll consider and discuss to approve an agreement of graduate assistant program amendments. And consider and discuss to approve H V three resolution for armed security officer requirements. Consider and discuss to approve twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six C C I S D salary instrument. And consider and discuss to approve board monitoring calendar. And last, consider and discuss the adoption of an election order for Copper's Co. I S D Board of Trustees elections to be held on November fourth, twenty twenty five. So we'll start there at the beginning. Of course, the minutes that are there. And Dr. Hawkins, you can start with the rest of the items if that works for everybody.
I think so that we're not here at midnight. Let me just say this. There are three items on this agenda that are very impacting. And that is six D, the discussion and approve, adopt, the resolution for the fund balance for the twenty, that should say twenty five, twenty six, twenty four, twenty five. We're still in the twenty four, twenty five fiscal year. And moving forward, the consideration to approve roofing repairs and damage to Williams Ledger and the C C I S D salary instrument. I think those three are very impactful and items that we can spend some time and delve into. And then I'll answer, y'all have had these since last week. I'll answer any questions on any of them that you have. Or I'll go through them one-on-one if you want me to. But I just thought we would spend the time speaking of things that were more impactful, if that's okay.
Any questions before D?
I want to ask on B. Look, are we still working on combining those checks?
It's a slow process of working on those headers. See that or issue blank checks? But yes, our communication postman.
Anything? If we could start on L three first. That is the whole situation at Williams Ledger. That roof has hail damage. And we had been in the process of getting, going through the procurement process. In that time, it started raining. And so water came in. And then it's like the clip out of Forest Hill. It rained for four months and it's never stopped. And it's just, it's gotten worse and worse of a problem every time. The last rain on Saturday, I'm sorry, Sunday, really just sunk our ship. We pulled water out of that building three times. And it is widespread, persistent water coming into the building.
Is that all three buildings?
All three buildings. It is an old roof that is brittle. And I think the more weight of, you know, obviously the hail, not pole or poles. And then the more weight that gets on the roof for the water, the more volume of water goes through the poles. And so at any rate, it is just a very challenging project because you can't start anything, you can't do anything as long as water is coming into the building. And so we've got, you know, the district's first obligation is to make sure that repairs are done for the safety of students and the safety of the staff. You want no mold growing. You want things remediated to where five years, five months from now, five days from now, after the completion of the project, you don't have an issue. There is a substantial insurance deductible that comes along with that. It's a million dollars per campus. And so that's why in your packet under D, and we'll talk about that in a minute, that there's monies designated for insurance deductibles in there. Because if every roof on ten campuses got substantial damage like this, then it would take ten million dollars to, of that, to take care of that. So that's why you have to keep those monies in reserves. But in this particular issue, the roof repair alone is going to be over a million dollars. Okay, we can do the numbers and, you know, rest assured that the roof repair bill for a million dollars. But all the carpet has been pulled out of that campus. Tiles have been pulled out of that campus. And the first step is to get a temporary roof over the top of that project so that the inside can be remediated. And then at some point, we'll have to come back and pull the temporary roof off and pull the rest of it more than likely off and re-roof it. And so there is some drywall damage in there. There is some tile damage in there. And the adjusters have been diligently working in there. But finally, as a board member, what do you need to know? I think by Thursday of this week, Jimmy, myself, the insurance adjuster, and the person doing the water abatement can all meet and figure out what point are we at on this continuum? Can we start school within the normal timeframe of our school calendar? And if we can't, then we'll have to next week start pushing out contingency plans for parents on exactly what's going to transpire. But nonetheless, we've got to get the job done. We've got to get the job done right. And then we've got to take care of kids one way or another. And so right now, I think there's just some things that's up in the air. You see in the packet there that's a three hundred thousand dollar quote on that temporary fix of that roof up there to ensure that we can get in there and start abating things. We run the air conditioner to a low level. There's been dehumidifiers in that building. There's fans in that building to try to mitigate the damage of water. Water inside of a building is not good.
Is it all over the building? Is there any parts in the building that's not affected?
The new parts. You know, the new classrooms that was built has new roofs, you know, so that side is not. But it is, hey, I have had buildings before that were five hundred gallon water heater busted in the night and ran all through the night. And you go in the building and it's over ankle deep in water. And it's just a waterfall coming out of the second floor. But it is contained to probably forty thousand square feet. This is comprehensive damage because it is in every building. It's in offices, it's in, you know, the cafeteria, it's in the gymnasium, it's in the hallways, it's in the classroom. It's not, it's kind of like a mosquito in the campus. It's there and there's a little bit of water coming out, but it's just so persistent that, you know, they run the squeezy machines, they've tried to catch water with with trash cans and barrels and things like that. But it is just so comprehensive that it's all over the roof damage. I guess the roof was so brittle that it just, it's come apart so much that it's just small segments of water throughout the building.
I don't know that that building or that roof had anything done to it since it was built up in nineteen ninety.
Name?
That's when it was built.
And that new A C system didn't even get put on there?
So has it, it has been on there.
Some of it has. Yeah, some of it has. So where they are, still have to do the work through the new A C units to go over the cafeteria. Those have not yet been installed.
So it's running on one redundancy.
So what is it, three million dollars for, because you said a million dollars for each building?
It's campus. So there's a million dollars of exposure there. Yeah, there's a million dollars of exposure. But here's the good news. It's, you know, you always got to look for the silver lining in there. And so a lot of the inside of that campus is going to be new. You know, you've got new carpets and new tiles and new ceiling tiles. And so a lot of that campus is, no one likes spending a million dollars. But there'll be a new roof on it. And there'll be a lot of new things inside of it when this thing is done. So that's the, that's the good news. And the bad news is, is that you got to spend a million dollars for deductible. And then the other thing of it is, is that we're going to have to really be flexible and have contingency plans for kids to make sure that we're ready for them come first. And it's not good on staff either. I mean, let's face it. Elementary teachers love beautiful classrooms. And so, you know, kind of being in limbo and not knowing and having to move and things like that, that is very stressful for them and I readily acknowledge that.
On the timeline, you know, we had this hillstorm, I'm tracking that, sixteen June is when the roof was expected. And we had, wasn't there any way for them to remediate the damage at that time? We had our rains, you know, a couple of weeks later.
I don't think that when it really originally started, it was that extensive. Somewhere along the line, I'd say, I don't know if it was just the roof, the roof was brittle. And the more moisture that got on there, the more the roof tore, it's a single blind roof. So it's not very thick. And so I don't know if it, but originally, there was a leak in the, was it the cafeteria?
Cafeteria.
That's it?
Cafeteria and then some of the, there was one or two offices on the left side. Williams side didn't have any leaks whatsoever. And then it was really the July, right around that, July fourth, was when that big
All that rain.
In Peru and that's where it was more widespread. And then when we got back to work, we had more rain. And then that's when Williams was impacted as well. And so I would say ninety-eight percent of all classrooms have some type of damage in it. Not a hundred percent of y'all.
So yes, of course, I understand we're from a leak in one part of the building to and I don't know, all I can tell you this is my experience with roofs is, Mr. Frank's can connect with that, I'm sure he knows it. Water does some weird things in buildings. And you can have water leaks and start trying to figure out where it's coming from. And that thing can be fifty to sixty yards away from where the hole is in the ceiling. So water does some crazy things on roofs sometimes.
In conjunction with that, have we looked at other older roofs to see if we've gotten any damage?
Yes, Tasby is looking at every roof in the district.
Tasby has five assessors in district this week to go back through and look at all the roofs in the district. We've had some other people out. And then we have some, some light damage at like baseball field, softball field, the practical ball field, we're going to be looking at the stadium. And so it's not just rooftops, it's some other components that were happening.
I have some big area. Yes.
So any other questions? I think at this point, that's about all we can safely predict or know. And by Thursday, we'll know how long because at that point, we'll know. The main challenge is getting a temporary roof on there to even start fixing things. And then once that happens, then you can kind of look at some construction schedules and figure out, okay, when can we reasonably think the kids could be in this building? And so from that point, I think Thursday, we should have a pretty good idea to say, hey, here's our contingency plan to start the school year off. Or, hey, look, this looks great. I guess I just worked myself into a negative mode. And every time I look up, there's water coming out of the sky. And I'm like, you know, because you look at forecasts and all of my apps and National Weather Service and everything will say, hey, there's nothing but sunshine skies next week. And then you get to Sunday, you start looking and, oh, there's a forty percent chance or a fifty percent chance or a ten percent chance. And you're like, what happened to all of the straight sunshine?
They had bigger than yesterday, like seven inches.
Yeah.
So I guess my next question is, is if, if you were to take us there right now, right, if you were to take us there right now, would there be soap tile ceilings still in school?
No, they're in dumpsters that have been hauled off.
So remediation has started?
Yes, there's seven dumpsters that, I guess seven. There was five I know that got hauled off and two more that came.
So with the latest rain, there's some additional cement tiles got wet. And they are pulling those down. So we've been pulling down wet ceiling towels and insulation. And then started pulling out because some of our lights, like the lights here, they have water in them, so we're disconnecting that so that power is, the lights don't be turned on with water in there. So but it's impacted. We'll have to have the fire alarm company come out and check the fire alarm systems, our intercom systems. Kip has gone through and looked and some of the speakers are there because of that cardboard have gotten wet. So what they've gone in and moved technology into dry areas. And then the projectors around walls have been covered. They're sure there's no further damage to any of the projectors that are on the walls. So yes, we've already started doing some mitigation, but we just, we need several days of no rain.
I'm worried.
Teachers return at the end of the month, correct? They will, they return to the campuses.
August first.
August first.
Yes.
And so it's, uh, twelve, thirteen.
The solar lighting, this is some schools. Yeah, look at the solar lighting. I mean, some schools completely. Otherwise we would have to have some water rescues.
That is true.
Yes.
Well, the other day, to bring that. And, uh, remove, get a little lot of cable that sits on that ceiling grid and communication wire. That is one I can start, except that I have with not just the, the damage from the water, but also from the removals all that stuff and getting things cool.
It's all a system.
Anything else? Dee, let's go back to Dee here and look at this, uh, fund balance, uh, designation. Uh, this has not been designated since, uh, August of twenty twenty-four, I think was the last designation there. Uh, if you look into page seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, uh, and eighty. Uh, page eighty shows you a historic look at where the district's fund balance, uh, has been. I will say one thing positive about that. If you will look in your investment. Financial statements and payments of the bills, you can see where, um, the interest off of that is pretty nice, right?
Yes, sir.
So your money is working for you. It's not just that there's seventy-six thousand eight hundred and three, uh, eight, seventy-six million, eight hundred and three thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars was the audited amount last time. And since then, that has generated a significant amount of interest. And so I, I wanted to, to add that in there because that's always something to think about. That is monies that are being, uh, brought into the district. On page seventy-nine, this is the sheet that at the bottom you say pending approval from the board trustees. This is what my recommendation of that seventy-six million is. And that thirty million there, uh, the blue on the very bottom, that's, uh, unassigned, uh, that, that needs to be assigned to cover, uh, three months' operating expenses and fund balance, okay?
But our monthly operating expenses aren't ten dollars a month, ten to eight dollars.
No, but when you look over, uh, seventy-six million dollar budget and then you add in the federal programs aspect of it too. Uh, that's what they get from the first report, uh, in order to be able to generate that, uh, check into your first reporting system, sort of financial rating integrity system and that.
Yeah, you know, again, uh, now I'm gonna, you know.
Dee is something that I want to pull from the consent.
One consent agenda is too large. Way too large. Dee is something that, that, you know, not quite sure things would be, I think you saw them separate.
Dee, you can pull ever out and you can.
Well, I'm not, I'm not the pointer yet.
Although you, you, you can do that.
I mean, what you can discuss is, I'm looking at it, you talk about seventy-six million upfront. And I got no issues with holding thirty million in reserve for operating expenses, right? But it's, our operating expenses are roughly eighty million.
There'll be more than that this year.
Okay, so four percent more, right? Whatever the case may be. But we have, we have quite a bit of fund balance out there. I got no issues with the assigned construction going forward, right? Future facility construction information. But as I'm looking at it, you, you, you have this resolution down here, you talked about a deficit. We talked about a deficit, you, you know, go back two years, we talked about deficit, deficit didn't occur. Again, this area is two point five, now it's six. Think it adds and flows. I looked at the funding report, shows about two point five unencumbered that we're above burning the black right now. My issue is, to me, it seems like there's nine point five that's left unaccounted for.
And including that six?
Include, well, yeah.
Yeah, but, but listen, I look like an idiot to sit here and say you approved a six million dollar deficit budget and that I don't include that into some type of where it's coming from. Because you as a board approved, uh, budget amendments like that five million there as we went along. You see what I'm saying? And so if you approve these items and I don't include them into that, then I look like I've left something out or I'm an idiot because y'all are my. Y'all took the official board action and approved that. And so if I don't put that in there, do I think there'll be a six million dollar deficit budget at the end of this? No, but there's ten months that's still hung out there, July and August, to start up the district and to run in two months' work of staffing. And so if I don't include that, I look like an idiot. Now we can wait till the end of August and I say, here's how much it's going to be. And then you can put it into a resolution or you can come back and amend the resolution in September.
Well, obviously we can amend the resolution, right? Because the board's adopted.
Yeah.
Right? But I'm looking at the mayor report for fund and it shows two point five million in the black.
I know.
Now, I, I would, I would assume that it includes the ledger improvements because you have encumbered on there.
There, there's two point five million in the black that there's June, July and August, those three months that we haven't had expenses come out either.
So what, whether it was reported or made, is it rolling or not?
Is it rolling?
Is it rolling, is it a rolling tally or is it, you know, end of year tally?
It, it's gonna be an end of the year when it gets to August thirty first.
Yeah, I just, I just think that we can, for me, just like I said last month, considering nineteen point five, I'd question the six million deficit that you have, right?
Yeah.
But the fact that, you know, we could easily put, in my opinion, another five million towards facility construction.
Yeah, it's possible.
Hell.
But if you're, I'm not arguing with you. I'm, I don't know what you think I am. All I'm saying is, I made a recommendation that's very conservative based on where we are with a crystal ball and the ability to look at the actions of the board over the past twelve months. If you want to say, there's thirty million dollars set here that we need to, that to stay for three months' operating expense. And so there is forty-six million dollars that you want to put in construction and you get three other people to help with you. You can do that and I'll go to building stuff. But this is just my recommendation from a very conservative standpoint to manage the district in a very judiciary manner. If that makes sense.
No, I want you, I got you.
Okay. Did you go long way or second way?
No. Uh, yes, and we've got that long way for what's in mind.
Any other questions? Uh, one thing I didn't explain, I kind of got off, got off track here, is that two point five million at the very top. My recommendation is, and I don't know that this is a good number, but in two, three weeks, we'll know what kind of number that is. Uh, my recommendation is that the baseball softball field needs some stuff done to it. And so regardless of a bond or not bond, that is the worst facility in the district. Uh, and so those monies, uh, are similar to what, uh, I had put in in my former district. And I know that inflation is constantly circling. But, um, I think that from an athletic standpoint, uh, you, you look at that softball field and it's sloped to the left field and you look at the baseball field and they can't practice.
And it's sloped to left field too.
And then, so there's, there's some issues that just needs to, we need to put some turf in. And turf is, is something that, obviously people argue about whether turf or grass is better one way or another. But at the end of the day, it is more economical once you get turf put in there than, uh, than grass is. From a water standpoint, from a labor standpoint.
Maintenance.
Uh, maintenance standpoint, uh, those things, uh, make a lot of sense. And, and so that's kind of why I split that out there just for you to be able to see that there was something additional out there that I, I think ought to be addressed. But that, that's nothing more than a recommendation.
Unless, I, I mean, I'm for it, but as long as it's engineered property to fix that slope.
Oh, it has to be, uh, the, the.
You don't want to run into another monsoon type rain that we have.
On slope, they, they come in and they, they dig all of the base out and they put new base in there with.
Uh, like a, a, a rock on the bottom.
Just they build.
Yeah, make, make sure.
And they put mats under it and then they roll the carpet out on top of that. But all of that becomes level.
Get levels that hold the field.
So I, you know, I know in the bond plan of twenty twenty-four, uh, there was a deal to take the softball field and move it to the baseball field. All of that's nice, but I just don't see that as necessary. I think that, uh, you put good playing surfaces on there for the kids, they're less likely to be injured. They're more likely to be able to get, um, the maximum amount of practice that they can get on those fields. Um, and then ho- hopefully out of, uh, monies that have been sitting, we've been trying to get, uh, the baseball field's backstop, uh, netting replaced.
That was my next question.
Uh, because it's being held together with.
Zip ties.
Zip ties.
Yeah.
And so we, we, we've got a, uh, we, we've had a quote on that, but I think it's too high. And so I've been trying to get a better price. Uh, and so hopefully we can get a better price and get that thing, uh, done for the bees level about Mike.
Yeah.
John.
Question, uh, the ten million aside for district insurance deductibles, if this is approved, will one million of that be used for lecture?
Yeah, obviously.
Or, or either, either way, if this is approved, we're still using the million dollars for lecture, you know, some parts, right?
Some parts. Yeah, it's on emergency repair. Definitely.
You know, the two point five, you know, at the softball and baseball, I find it, uh, we talked before, nothing new, right? Especially those that are tracking, y'all, I'm more interested personally in the elementary playgrounds. Fixing the elementary playgrounds, giving them, giving them shade, an adjustment, updating one.
That can be type thing.
Absolutely, yes.
Well, we, we are, uh, putting more field into their playground area for their fall, their fall areas. Um, I, I understand what you're saying and I'm not arguing with that. I'm just saying that most districts operate that the PTOs and PTAs of those campuses, their fundraising efforts goes into the playground areas. Um, and so if, if that's not the way that we're going to operate as a district, then we probably need to have some conversation about what is our expectation of fundraising from a PTO, PTA perspective?
Well, one, our PTOs, PTAs can't afford it, right? And they're glad entertainment was where we're going to go, right? So the elementary campuses, the playgrounds need attention. Playgrounds need attention.
First off, I think I like what you've got here. Sorry for the, my bad projection. I think it's with a vote per session.
Jeff couldn't use some of that money with fifteen million down. You used to its playground.
Our forty-six million.
Yeah. She didn't done that under the plan here with fifteen.
No, I'm just saying, if you want to do forty-six million, we can, we can put some Cadillac playgrounds up. We can put little.
Oh, that's, I mean, that's kind of a, I mean, that's not, is it really necessary? I mean, we've been talking about updating and needs for more than a couple of years.
Is the baseball softball field necessary?
Of course it is.
I feel like, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah.
And the, the playgrounds, are they, they're addressing those, I believe, in the, in the bond? Weren't they looking at that?
We don't have anything with the committee that's looking at.
Oh, you don't? I thought, I thought there were, I guess I'm thinking about the coverings.
The, uh, the previous bonds, um, playgrounds work with tonne, uh, what we were.
That must be what I'm thinking about.
But it, it has not made its way in this, the last bond, it was the update playgrounds. Um, that's where, um, every campus is going to be embedded.
Of like new equipment or canopy and new equipment?
Can, um, it was the base layer, playground equipment and coverings.
Yeah.
They have playground equipment now that already has coverings built into the playground equipments. Um, and looking at what that will look like versus like at CBE. Um, probably outside, they have that one covering that was off about that they burned with it. But that was purchased from, uh, uh, at duty funds from fund aids.
Well, can we?
Other questions? On yet?
Well, I know having looked at when I was on the committee, some of those playgrounds, they, they do need some attention.
Sure.
But I'm kind of, I, I liked what this points out, but I don't know why we can't use some of that fifteen million for new construction on some of those playgrounds. Um, at least get some of them started so that we've got, because some of those playgrounds are in, in terrible shape.
I saw Jewel, Fairview Jewels the other day.
Yeah, well, if you're talking about Fairview Jewel, there's needs in the building.
Everywhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, touche, yeah.
But, uh, no, you can, I mean, look, I, people talk about bond, that is, that is a great bond strategy to put into a bond.
It is.
Proposition.
I really thought.
Yes, see.
Yeah, I thought it was in this.
As a, no. Proposition C, you could, you could tag that on as a proposition.
I'd like to see multiple propositions.
That, that would be good.
And let, let people vote for or against, uh.
Wear their minds and peddle themselves to them.
Yep.
You got options?
That, that would be a good idea.
Uh, anything else?
Yeah, I was gonna, I, I think Dee needs to come out to the consent agenda.
We can do that. But if there's any more discussion.
Yeah.
I mean, any more questions that you, y'all think just like now, it would be a good time to bring them up so they could be, uh, researched if they need to be, if, if a question needs to be researched, they'll know what they're looking for before tomorrow night. So if anybody has questions or ideas that, uh.
Now, I would like to know on, on the, especially on the baseball field, especially on the business, because I know we've put money in the baseball field the last couple of years. So I like to know that, that it's not too harsh, we've got too much to ask for.
You know, explicit for what?
How much we have put into baseball field the last couple of years.
All the, on the field itself, turf, or are you talking about like stands and?
No.
Well, the facility, yes. Good. Just baseball or baseball softball?
No, just baseball.
Never would put anything into baseball.
Yeah, that's what's been figured, softball field, yes, covered, that's, I don't do.
Didn't, uh, didn't the ag department put in those dugouts, the cement dugouts recently?
They cemented one front of the dugout.
They cemented the front of the dugout.
What kind of project, yeah. Last two persons.
Oh, I think the only thing they put in was, was that uh, the batting cages.
The la, the last project that was done for baseball and softball, it's like covered the batting cages, but that wasn't within the last two years.
Yeah.
That was about four years ago.
It's war.
Four or five, yeah, I remember.
Cause they didn't remember anything, did they?
Yeah.
Like a, yeah, I'm sure.
Was it, wasn't it, wasn't the baseball field renovation included in that last bond?
Yeah.
Yeah, they had them, so all that stuff was, see, all, all those things, the, the, just, I get, the bond that didn't pass. All that stuff was going to be included in that, if that had passed, uh to do the upgrades and.
Yeah, all those things.
So the need, the need's been there, that's, we can't argue that. The, the need's there for the baseball fields, the need's there for the playground stuff too. So, uh. How, how we get to that point is the point of contention here, is how we're gonna get to that, how much money we're gonna spend.
Come in.
The, the other thing is, is if we wind up with hail damage on some of the other roofs, if we spend all of that unencumbered money. We, we have nothing to pay.
We, we should know about that person.
Okay. Yes, that's your gesture to retain them eventually.
Yeah, that's the reason I asked about that.
But aren't, aren't we getting down to the wire to decide about a bond?
How you have until?
August eighteenth.
Second week in August, yeah, third week on.
Well, when will we have another report from that facilities committee?
Well, they meet Thursday.
Okay.
And then they're gonna just conjure up something for a presentation to us again, or?
No, we need to see. Where that goes.
You know.
What, what recommendations they see like, don't like. What the architects might take that committee.
Do we have that report from the architects yet?
It goes to the committee.
Committee?
Yeah.
Okay.
On Thursday.
Oh, on Thursday, okay.
Alright, page two oh four. This is the. Twenty-five, twenty-six CCISD recommendation for salary instrument. Um. You've had this provided to you of um. The ten. And so I'll walk through the recommendation there. Uh. The uh. House Bill two, uh, while very divisive in nature. Uh, we are a district that is under five thousand students. Therefore, teachers that are three years, uh, into four years. Uh, will get a flow-through amount of money of twenty-five hundred dollars. That's for teachers that are PMS coated eighty-seven in the PMS coating. Five years and above, uh, there's a flow-through amount of money for five thousand dollars uh for those teachers. Uh, and so step zero and two have been left out of, of everything. Uh, and uh, I, I have never made a recommendation that wasn't comprehensive in nature as far as staffing goes. The reason I say that is because I believe everybody's important in the school system. It does not matter if you're the principal, if you're the custodian, if you're the bus driver, if you're the diagnostician, everybody has a role to play. In meeting the needs of kids and so, uh. The uh, the, the salary scales that are in this document here. Um, if you look at, if you've looked at those, uh, you can see those are where our groups of employees are. And you also see market comparisons there on page two. Oh, five. And so non-campus administrative professional support. Um, are at eighty-six percent of the comparison group. CCISD administrative professionals are ninety-six point one percent of the comparison group. Clerical and paraprofessionals are eighty-four percent of the comparison rate. Auxiliary personnel are eighty-eight percent to the comparison group. The way that the Tasby model works and should function is every year those brackets move with the CPI. So whatever the, the CPI is next year, uh, come this time of year, those brackets should all move. The midpoint, the, the beginning and the ending of salary in all of those brackets should move. That keeps you market comparable. And as you can see, we've got a comprehensive uh list here that are undermarked. Now, I wouldn't say this, and it's also in fairness to the district, that folks understand. That we pay more in benefits than districts that are in these comparison groups too. So when you look at that, uh, you know, you can look at another five percent or so that's set over there. That would be driven up depending on what job classification you have. So just looking at a apples-to-apples comparison of salaries isn't necessarily fair to the district. When the benefit package is greater in our district than some of the others. But what I uh also say is this, you have fiduciary responsibility to balance the budget. And so as one of the goals of balancing the budget, I feel like that we can attain that by. Uh. Addressing the recommendation that I made with three percent of the midpoint for everyone who is within that salary scale. Uh, who is not already getting the um retention flow-through money from House Bill two. Does that make sense there, Mark?
You're talking about administration.
Everybody.
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 All those, like, non-instructional, non-instructional.
Non-instructional personnel.
And yeah, everybody, everybody in the district that is in that scale would get a three percent of the midpoint. Uh, I think that if you want to work your way into uh continuing to be competitive with retention. And recruitment of staff, the way to do that is to try to ensure every year that somebody get, everybody gets some. Uh, going years without giving people salary uh adjustments. Uh, wind up putting you behind the eight ball at some point. And sometimes you get to where you get into such a hole that you can't dig out.
Yep.
And so um, that's a very conservative, fiscally responsible. Um, path to put the district on an orderly trajectory. As far as the, the, the staffing and uh model. Uh, that would work us into becoming more and more competitive over uh a set of amount of years. And being fiscally responsible uh as well. Um, you just can't get into years that everybody is just frozen. Um, like I say, when that happens, the market doesn't freeze and then you, it's harder to catch up.
Dr. Robbins, on the stipend adjustment, what, what is the, the, the market group?
Uh, the market group is, is, is the uh Colleen.
So it's our, our area.
Yes, it's, it's that area.
Elton Temple, Land House.
And, and what I'm saying to that is there's, there's an handful of salaries that are out there. Uh, the color guard is there. Uh, our, our stipend for color guard is five hundred dollars. And the market group is thirty-five hundred dollars. And so I'd recommend going to three thousand on that. So that we're not really at the market, that we're not at the market with any of our salaries. And when I say any, yes, we are at the market somewhere, uh, but, but as a group. Now, I just find, when you don't look at things as a group, you start to have winners and losers along the way.
So our market group that's above the, or, or our uh stipends that are above the market group, then they remain that way?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there's only a handful of them and, and, and the one that I know comes to, what was the most egregious one of them was the color guard stipend. Was it five hundred and it's a, it's a thirty-five hundred dollar market median. Uh, that's on that salary and so I recommend trying to get within five hundred dollars.
Okay.
You know, we pay a lot of money out in salaries, uh, really and truly, it's a, it's a, it's somewhere in the, within two million dollars. That we pay out in salaries uh to staff. And then you do the math on that, that's about, if, if everybody got the same amount of stipend, that'd be somewhere average thirty-three hundred dollars per employee. With stipends. So, and uh, you know, there, there are some salaries that uh, you know, that Mr. Dixon had, had uh called me and talked to me about. Uh, a handful of those that are well below the market and some, some of those are there for a reason. But when you look at people who are uh below the market or whatever, it's important that you look and look at what is the market years of experience. Okay, so if, if you've got a, I, I don't know, uh, just. Uh, police chief, we don't have a police chief, let's just say we have a police chief. Uh, if, if you have a police chief in, in your, in, in here and that chief is, is seventy percent of the market median. And all of these people are in the eighties. Then you need to look at that and see if that person needs to be bumped up to in the market coefficient there maybe eighty-two percent. But if that's that first year for that person to ever be a police chief. Then the market may have a fifteen-year uh.
Yeah.
Service on.
Sure.
You know, and so it's not fair to pay a police chief. Have a fifteen-year market value on that person at zero, if that might be seen.
Of course.
Yeah, so I, you have to look at those.
It's vice versa the other way too.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right?
Absolutely.
And uh, you know, I'm, I'm gonna say kudos because. Your predecessor didn't really quite see CPI and I the same way.
Okay.
Right? Um, because every year you don't, you don't adjust pay, it's not pay increase, right? You're just keeping up with inflation.
Absolutely.
You know, and the last, and the last pay we had was twenty twenty-three, which is two percent.
Four hundred.
And I'm gonna again, you just talked about, you know, the difference of.
Benefits.
Difference of, well, yeah, but that, that's, I mean, I give me a cost on that, right? Just don't, I'm bringing to the table, tell me what does it actually cost because as, as I look at this, you know, my, my. Hey, three percent's a great start.
Yes.
Right? But we want to be the district choice, we want people to come here.
Right.
Alright, and we've, we've got, we've got a certain target audience that's well above ninety percent. And we've got another target audience that they're not above ninety percent. So what would it take to get those folks above ninety percent? And the other aspect, we talked about experience. Years ago, I mean, three years ago now, we as a board decided to pay for experience for our teachers, for retaining. For retention, right, and recruiting.
Right.
I think the same needs to go for all the other staff that's out there. There needs to be some sort of step increase for those that are committed to the district, right? They're dedicated and commitment, that's sticking out with the district. Right? The fact that you have yours twenty years as a paraprofessional, hey, that's what you want to do and that's your love by all means. But me, Jeff Goris, I want to encourage that individual to stay by longevity pay step increase.
And, and if HR is functioning. Correctly, then that person should be in a position on the scale that is above the midpoint. And that we're giving that person and then we're keeping up. We, we want to give people within their experience level of the market and not let them fall behind. That's the, the mission of the Tasby model.
Well, again, right.
And I'm not saying that it's always followed because like you say, if you don't move the scales, then the scales go defunct.
Well, it's Mr. Dix, Dixon, right?
Yes.
As he has presented, right? You know, I'm, I'm looking at this, I mean, you know, I would encourage everybody here on page two oh five. We have a set that's way above ninety percent and then nobody else is. So, you know, my, my challenge would be get everybody above ninety percent. I'm okay with the three percent starting off, right, to adjust it.
Yes.
Going into this.
No, I, we share the same goal.
You know, but on the same note, just keeping them at eighty-eight percent when another, other folks are at ninety-six or ninety-seven? No, thank you, sir.
Yeah, no, we, we have the same goal and I, and I, huh, I, I understand what you're saying.
I don't know where everybody else stands, but yeah, that's how I stand.
Also say this, I think it's important from this perspective. You only get money. Uh, from the state each bay, okay? And so this allotment that's came out, the House Bill two allotment for teachers. So if I'm a teacher that's been teaching here for fifteen years. And I'm gonna get five thousand dollars this year. So I'm gonna get the same thing next year, right?
You think?
Well, it's in the, it's in the formula, okay? The question becomes your three.
Yep, that's, that's, as we discussed.
The legislature says it's gonna be funded, it's in statute. Now, the mechanism is in statute, but the funding isn't in statute. Just like the golden penny that, 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 this community voted for was in statute. But now they've changed the statute and that golden penny is kept. You don't, you don't get that. They sent you fifty-five dollars on, on your, in your template to get, to get to that.
Of course.
Uh, but what I'm saying is this, at five thousand dollars. That teacher, and I'm not anti-teacher, so please don't, as, as I'm being recorded here. I, I want, I want to be fair and point out things of, out of fairness and I think that's what you've done. But just take this for an example. Um. That, that teacher and, and, and I say that with saying this, no superintendent over the past decade has given teacher raises. Any more than I've recommended, okay? So I'm, I'm not anti-teacher, but what I'm saying is, is that that teacher is gonna get five thousand dollars. Five thousand this year and they'll get that same five thousand next year. So if they're making seventy thousand dollars and they get the five thousand dollar bond, their salary is gonna be seventy-five thousand. What percent did that teacher get? Of the midpoint, it's probably gonna be about six or seven percent, okay?
Yeah.
So that teacher is getting six or seven percent of the midpoint. Now, y'all didn't know that as a board, but that's exactly the people that you give the, the, the biggest pay scale adjustment. Okay, so a, as far as in the percentages of things, was doing. I don't think anybody in this paradigm here, you can say is, hey, they're doing great. E- everybody can make a case for additional monies and, and I, and I, and I concede that and would do that. But what I'm saying is, is that if teacher with fifteen years' experience gets six or seven percent this year and everybody else is getting three. We don't have any new monies coming next year to give that teacher an additional three like everybody else is getting. So I just say.
But that's not what, that was not in what is presented. Right, it's, the, the teachers are already funded.
The teachers are already funded. But the teachers aren't funded for next year. But what I'm telling you is, is that next year, these other folks need to come in and get an additional. Additional percentage of the midpoint. But this teacher at fifteen years has already got five thousand dollars. Paraprofessional gets three percent. Teacher gets seven percent or six percent, wherever they found that they did. Teacher gets seven percent or six percent, wherever they found that they do, okay? Next year, the teacher has kind of already got theirs in this by year. And then it's our duty to try to figure out what we can do to get that paraprofessional another step.
Again, the focus, right?
That's what I'm saying.
Two oh five is is I'm pointing out, right? How are we gonna do that, because obviously, there's, and this is his work, not mine, not yours. He's pointing out that we've got a a pretty wide gap in our midpoints across our non-instructional, right, non-teachers, if you wanna call it. That is not my conversation. It's not what's being presented, right? Just believe this one being presented is non-instructional. And you go from eighty-six to ninety-seven percent. So again, totally support three percent. It's been two years since they had a, you know, sure, right, that was two percent. And oh, by the way, inflation was up what that year, four percent? Last year is a three percent, right now we're tracking a little bit better than two and a half percent, right? My rec- you know, again, fully support three percent. How are we gonna get everybody else to ninety percent? And oh, by the way, are we gonna, are we gonna encourage, you know, longevity retention with a, some sort of step increase for all those non-instructional folks?
Well, when you look at people in a group, first of all, remember that there are different levels of experience in that group. And so you have to look at, look at all of those things. If you look at each person individually, to look at what the market says that that person is, and kind of make a comparison, and that's where they fit, they fill in on the Tasby model. But the question you're asking is, how do we close the gap down the line?
There's a ten bottom, there's a ten percent difference rate here uh across the district. Ten percent.
And ninety-seven percent is just amazing. I mean, that that is wonderful. I don't know yet, ninety-seven percent is what we should hit for for everyone, because that's, I mean, we're, we're not a wealthy district.
No, we're not, no, man, we're not, right? And and I'm not saying ninety-seven needs to be it, I believe I said above ninety is what it said. Right? I also believe I said a step to incentivize retention, right? Is it, you know, to to award commitment and dedication. Very much like we do in the district, with the teachers, yes, ma'am, and with the other three categories, right?
That you talked about. Severance, right here, yeah.
I understand what you're saying. I'm I'm just pointing out that this is where they are. And and the recommendation is three percent, which you said that. But at some point, it's got to.
At some point, we need to come back as a team of eight and say, hey, we're gonna really look at this once, we're gonna take care of our folks. We're gonna incentivize, retain, recruit, pay for dedication, pay for commitment. It is part of the deal, right, human resources, part of our charter, right, take care of folks, and you can't do it without good folks. But we're gonna close this gap. To make up for it, right? Now, it might be a year, it may be two.
Agreed, I think you, I think you're looking at a three-year process, this year being one.
Ending this year.
And within a, and within a couple more years, we ought to be able to, we're we're gonna continue to work every year, and I'm gonna bring you something every year to give somebody something. But I'm also the guy that is trying to keep the goose from, that like the golden egg from being killed. And so I don't wanna get our chin out over our skin. And so I wanna keep us fiscally sovereign, but I also, this is the thing that we value. And so this is where we have to put our treasure.
You're totally support, I don't think you'll find any more fiscal conservative than me, sir. That we need to address.
I don't think you find any of the bells that you do the job. And uh worked at two years twice and you know, completely, I went two years about.
Just look at what he said, I mean, look at what the chief said.
Here's the thing about that, though, no good deed goes unpunished. No matter where you're at on the continuum, if we close these gap, if there was a magic wand and I could waive it and be fiscally responsible and balance the budget and put everybody at ninety-six point one percent, somebody is gonna be gripping somewhere in the district. But the problem is, is this, that noise is irrelevant. There's a right thing to do, and the right thing to do is to start taking persistent and consistent steps to make sure that we have the best salary compensation plan in second classes.
I think you're always taking steps, instead of trying to do it all at once, we take steps so that we can feed that fiscally responsible.
I mean, there's there's some dynamics that come into play that I'm uneasy about. Uh from a financial standpoint, I know Cliff would probably echo those same sentiments of our utility rates, I'm probably fixing to double. You know, and so there's another million dollars that's probably hung in there somewhere that we've got to figure out a way to smooth and and to manage the best that we can. Uh and so that that has to be turning as well, because you're always trying to push money into this.
That just damages the roof, we already have a roof problem.
Any, any other questions?
Any other questions about anything on the agenda? And we will pull out D tomorrow.
Oh, graduate assistant program, what are the amendments?
The only amendment was that we need a little more constraint on that, so that I approve that, that it is really.
So that's the amendment, is you're gonna be the approval for it?
Well, I I wanna make sure that uh if you've got two master's degrees, you want your third. That's really not a big.
Okay, that's fine. There there was no, there was no amendment on the uh
Well, that's how you criticize people.
Here's the needs of the district. Uh in Amanda's area, she's got people that are uh graduating with a speech pathology degree, and we need them to have a master's degree. And so that is, that is something that greatly benefits district, and that's something that we need to to uh to take care of and to try to help with. Um we have a robust and growing early college model, and we need teachers that have a bachelor's degree, maybe in physics, to get their master's degrees so that they can teach the college deal of that, because it lowers the cost to our, to our district. So if we can put a master's degree in a teacher's hand, that lowers the cost of that, and that's the gift that keeps on giving. It's just that Jim has got two master's degrees, and he's sitting out here teaching P E, and now he wants a third degree in, you know, Western Civ. Then that doesn't really, hey, great, Jim, congratulations, but that's kind of on your own, you know, so there there just has to be some checks and balances.
No, I, no, I appreciate it, right, just clarification.
So what if the bills come in for the electricity, uh you know, going up? Is it gonna be all in this one part right here?
Talking about this fridge rotor that we live in right now?
Hey, don't blow, don't blow over the freezer.
If if it's gonna keep me in the cold, this is.
I'm just surprised.
I'm fine, I'm in shorts.
I was gonna, I was gonna wear something on the way out, but since I don't need it.
I've got a jacket on, I don't know how they're doing in T-shirts. You two need to, I don't know.
We need to move over there, y'all need to move there, I guess.
Yeah, we need to switch. Sorry, I forget where we're recorded, but.
What's chilly?
It it it's more than chilly.
Feels good.
All right, nothing else? Okay, if there's nothing else, we'll adjourn on any at two twenty-one.
No close section.